For Mayor Lockwood, Councilman Thurman, Coontz, Lusk, Hewitt, Longoria, and Morag. For them as council members, but also as fathers and mothers, sons and daughters, and spouses, that their families would be blessed and thriving. And God, as they come together tonight, that you would give them clarity of mind and a sense of purpose as they govern for this city. You know, and fathers, we are in October in Breast Cancer Month. We also pray for the families in our community that are dealing with this horrible disease and everything that they are battling with. God, we pray for their comfort and peace and that our network of resources in our community can be there to help and to support them. And so, God, as we close tonight in this prayer, we pray for the agenda and for your assurance of what is right, fair, and just for all who live and work in and around Milton, the best city in Georgia. In it's your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay, good evening. We'll welcome you to our call to regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, October 17th, 2016, to order. Sudi, if you'll please make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the October 17th, 2016, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment allowed for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morag.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and we appreciate everybody here tonight. And Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 16, 228.
Okay. Does council have any recommendations or changes on the agenda? I would like to take new business item number one for the resolution appointing a member to the planning commission and move that to after reports and presentations. Was there anything else? How about staff? Okay, I'll open up a motion for the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda as prepared by staff with the addition of moving item number one out of new business to after reports and presentations.
Second? Okay, I have a motion for approval. Councilmember Longoria is second with Councilmember Morag. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous, Sudi. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two, and the first one comes from Cleveland Slater.
Good evening, Cleveland Slater, 13670 Bethany Road, Milton. I was surprised by the discussion last week about the proposed use permit for office space in AG1. I am not opposed to rezonings for office uses where appropriate in AG1 areas. In fact, the Birmingham Road property that was used to justify the use permit seems to be deserving of a rezoning. I am concerned, however, that a use permit designed to benefit maybe four parcels may have greater unintended consequences. Last night, I looked at our zoning maps and tax records and found potentially 22 properties that meet the same criteria as the property that was discussed near Cambridge High School. Eight tracks on Coburn Road, two on Bethany Bend, two tracks on Providence Road adjacent to existing commercial uses, six tracks on Birmingham Road, one track on Hopewell, one track at Bell Park Drive, and possibly a second at Bell Park Drive, two tracks on Hickory Flat Road. Decisions involving use permits follow the same processes of rezoning. The application is advertised, the planning commission reviews the application, and makes a recommendation to council, and council votes to approve or deny the special use permit. However, unlike a rezoning where council retains broad discretion in making decisions, discretion in the issuance of a use permit is limited to analyzing the facts of a particular case with respect to the specific criteria specified in the use permit ordinance. Language authorized in a special use permit may be drafted so that upon the satisfaction of the criteria, the special permit must be issued, or the language may be drafted allowing limited discretion to approve requests on a case-by-case basis. If the criteria is specific and the criteria met, council is essentially obligated to issue the permit. If the criteria is more general, council retains limited discretion. However, the language is general, council is essentially following the rezoning process and opening the community up to unintended consequences. It's difficult to predict unintended consequences. I urge council to retain full discretion with respect to land use decisions in AG1 zoned areas. Do not create an AG1 office use permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sudi, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Tim Becker.
I want to tonight speak to the same issue. This was a topic at the last week's working session. I was actually perplexed about why this topic was even on the agenda. It seems that a single landowner has come to the city complaining that no one will buy his parcel. I was troubled that not one single council member asked the most obvious question. Why doesn't this landowner submit a rezoning application? Why are we going to spend time and money to write a new ordinance and create a new process for an issue that is better handled under our existing rezoning ordinance and process? This seems like a terrible waste of taxpayer money, and it just adds more clutter to the city code. Furthermore, this agenda item raises the issue of prioritization. Does staff really have so little to do that staff has time to evaluate such trivial requests? And why is staff going even further and identifying three other properties with similar circumstances? Lastly, I do not buy the argument that the landowner cannot sell his property. I believe that Milton has a very efficient market for property. Obviously, the landowner wants more than his property is worth for residential development, so he is seeking to do an end run around the more rigorous rezoning process. We all know that Milton is a highly desirable place to live. Home buyers will buy houses on lots right next to the road and hanging off cliffs. In any case, according to the American Planning Association, and I'm quoting here, "The fact that a zoning ordinance does not allow the owner to make maximum profit from the property is not undue hardship since zoning often has that effect." In conclusion, I recommend that council revisit this issue and redirect staff to focus on issues of real importance to the city. Staff should advise these landowners to submit a rezoning application. And generally speaking, council needs to send a very clear message to special interests that the city has a zero tolerance policy for this sort of rent-seeking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, do we have any? Is that all public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. If you'd please read those items.
Under our consent agenda, the first item is approval of the July 11th, 2016, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 16-229. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Great Southern Recreation LLC for the construction of a playground for Broadwell Pavilion, Agenda Item Number 16-230. Next, approval of a utility relocation agreement by and between the City of Milton and Georgia Power Company for Project PI 0007313, Agenda Item Number 16-231. Next, approval of a professional services agreement by and between the City of Milton and Stan Tech Consulting Services for Project PI 0007313 Design Modifications, Agenda Item Number 16-232. Our fifth consent agenda item this evening is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Constance Pehead Doing Business as Technical Forestry Services for the revision of the city's tree preservation ordinance, Agenda Item Number 16-233. Next, approval of a change order number one to the furniture design consultant agreement between the City of Milton and Office Images, Inc., Agenda Item Number 16-234. Our seventh and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of subdivision plot revisions approval. Regit Avantigam Land Lot 681 and 688, minor plat, combined two lots, 7.55 total acres, .13 lots per acre. Parkview Land Lot 1169, final plat, revision 13 lots, revised addresses, lots 1 through 3, and lots 11 through 13, 2.8 total acres, 4.59 lots per acre. Patrick R. Fullerton and David Marsden, Land Lots 889 and 912, minor plat, create two lots, 4.819 total acres, .41 lots per acre. And last, James A. Burns and Allison D. Burns, minor plat, create two lots, 8.835 total acres, .23 lots per acre. This is Agenda Item Number 16-235.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, next items, reports and presentations. Sudi, if you will, please call the first report.
This evening, we have a proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This is being presented by councilmembers Karen Thurman, Joe Longoria, and Rick Morag.
Thank you. Breast cancer doesn't just affect an individual, it affects a family, as I'm sure my husband, Mark, Rick Morag, and Joe Longoria can attest to. One in eight U.S. women will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. For men, it is one in a thousand. In 2016 alone, almost 250,000 women in the U.S. will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, and another 61,000 will be diagnosed with non-invasive breast cancer. Less than 15% of women who are diagnosed have a family history of breast cancer, and only 5% to 10% of breast cancers can be linked to an inherited gene mutation. About 40,000 women will die in the U.S. from breast cancer in 2016, though death rates have been decreasing since 1989. The decreases are due to treatment advance, early detection, and increased awareness. For women in the U.S., breast cancer death rates are higher than those for any other cancer besides lung cancer. Many communities do not have the resources within their communities to treat breast cancer. We are very fortunate here in Milton that we have two facilities, Northside Hospital Alpharetta, which is where I was treated, and Wellstar North Fulton Hospital, which has a new breast cancer specialty teams and treatment clinic. Both of those are available to our residents. When I was diagnosed two years ago, there were several women here tonight that probably did not know what the terms triple negative, estrogen-fed, sentinel node, or oncotype test meant. Since that time, these have become part of their regular vocabulary and they are now part of the survivors' club. The purpose of this proclamation is to continue to bring awareness to the need for early detection and for the continued research in the treatment of breast cancer. 2016 National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, October 2016 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and?
Whereas, breast cancer is the second most common cancer among women after skin cancer, and?
Whereas, one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer at some point in their life, and?
Whereas, over 246,600 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2016, and about 40,000 women will die from the disease, and?
Whereas, in 2016, there are more than 2.8 million women with a history of breast cancer in the United States. This includes women currently being treated and women who have finished treatment, and?
Whereas, every woman is at risk for breast cancer, even if she has no family history or other risk factors of disease, and?
Whereas, the efforts of various organizations have made regular contributions to spreading breast cancer awareness through outreach, education, and screening programs, and have empowered women with the life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms.
Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, Georgia, hereby dedicate and proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Milton, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, given it under his hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 17th day of October 2016, Mayor Joe Lockwood. And I would like to ask all of those that have been affected by breast cancer, all of their family members, and all of the wonderful people who help work with the hospitals and doctors that treat us, to please come down for a picture.
Thank you, Karen, Joe, and Rick for doing that, as well as it's an honor to have everybody here that's been touched by this disease. All right, Sudi, I think we are going to move the planning commission, correct? If you'll call that item.
This is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Planning Commission, Board District 3, Post 2, Agenda Item Number 16-238.
Okay, I think it was Councilmember Morag.
Tonight, it's my pleasure to nominate Sumit Shah for the position on the planning commission. Sumit has served the city as a volunteer since April of 2014 on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and he has already tendered, tentatively tendered his resignation from that board so that he could join and become a member of the planning commission. He also was appointed to the CPAC and worked diligently on that since December 7th of 2015. Sumit lives with his family in Lake Laurel in our district, and I would like to request that we nominate and approve Sumit Shah for the planning commission.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor? Yep. So moved, second. All right, I got a motion for approval, Councilmember Thurman, second, Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sumit, if you'd like, I can go ahead and swear you in, so that everyone else can swear at you.
No, I would say this, you know, part of what makes the city great is all our volunteers and the efforts and time and all that, so we appreciate, obviously, everything you've done in the past and what you're committing to do in the future.
Yeah, I'm not getting myself into it. Thank you, Jeff.
If you'd just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Planning commission member.
Planning commission member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Okay, we don't have any items under first presentation, so we can move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please call that first item.
This is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, extending until December 6th, 2016, an existing moratorium barring the acceptance of applications for conceptual plan approval for subdivisions located within the five-acre road zone, Agenda Item Number 16-236. I do have one public comment card on this.
Okay.
And that is Mr. Billy Carmen.
My name's Billy Carmen. I live at 3405 Acre Road, Milton, Georgia, which is directly behind this property, and I'm really not sure exactly what's going on, but you hear things, and I just want to make sure that we've been fighting this for quite some time. We agreed that they would zone it commercial for certain office buildings and things, and I'm not sure what the subdivision thing is all about, but I'd like to just keep it commercial with the items or the businesses that we agreed on sometime last year, so if you would just consider that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
Yes, sir, that would be Ms. Laura Bentley.
Hi, good evening. Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. I'm here to lend my support to including the five-acre parcels in the Highway 9 moratorium. It's my understanding that these five-acre parcels will be included in the text amendments. That process began with a CZIM on September 27th. That CZIM, to my understanding, was to amend the Highway 9 Form-Based Code so that the restriction of townhomes in designated commercial areas will take place. Our minimal commercial areas need to be reserved for premier commercial uses, and our residential areas need to be closely managed with a keen eye towards keeping density to a minimum, thus reducing our overcrowding of schools, roads, and parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, do we have any other speakers?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and put up for Mr. Juro.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Thank you very much. This was the public hearing with respect to this extension of a moratorium. As the council may recall, we had an emergency moratorium that we added that was already to supplement an existing moratorium with respect to the acceptance of these concept plan approvals while the city planning department worked through modifying the code with respect to the Highway 9. So this was simply adding to an moratorium that was already in place to add the five-acre road area. After the public hearing, there is an agenda item later in your agenda that if you approve this resolution, it will extend this component of the moratorium until December 6th, 2016, which is consistent with the rest of the moratorium that's already been put in place. So this is nothing other than tacking on one additional little area onto an already existing moratorium. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Okay, I'll just open up for motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I think we'll need to.
Right.
Yeah.
It's later on. Oh, sorry. Another public hearing, so Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is an alcohol beverage license application, public hearing. Consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to LRF Milton LLC Doing Business as Little River Farms, located at 14505 Batesville Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004. This is Agenda Item Number 16-237. Ms. Stacy English.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first of its kind. We've not had a special event facility alcohol beverage permit or license issued because we've only had two facilities. This one allows alcohol to be served by the employees of the event facility at Little River Farms, and it is for their special events. They've adhered to all the requirements of the city, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have any public comment on that, Sudi?
No, sir. The attorney is here for those representing, and if there are any questions, she is here.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? I'll open up for motion, Jeff.
Yeah, so I was just going to ask real quick if you mentioned that this is the first. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
It is the first one of its kind. We've not had a special event facility alcohol beverage permit issued.
Okay, but that's just because nobody's ever asked. It's not there's some different set of criteria that's so impossible to achieve that nobody's done it. Okay.
This is the first one that's actually applied.
All right.
Well, just quickly, you stated they have to comply with all of the other aspects of...
The advertising, the sign placement, and things like that, yes, sir.
Does this include pouring permits?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? No, I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 16-237. Yep. Second.
Okay, got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
I was fortunate enough to attend a function today at Little River Farms. What a beautiful facility, so it kind of showcases what I think everybody thinks of Milton when they look around, so. All right, let's see, we have no items under a zoning agenda or unfinished business, so we'll move to new business.
This item is consideration of a resolution to create the Milton... This item is consideration of a resolution to create the Milton Cultural Art Committee, MCAC. Agenda Item Number Sixteen Two Three Nine, Ms. Sarah Ladark.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This resolution is something that you guys asked me to look into a long time ago, and we finally have it done. It's been vetted through legal, and I think it covers everything that you guys asked it to. It encompasses all areas of art that could potentially take place in the city, from the literary festival to live theater to public art displayed on the city property. It'll be up to the board or committee that you guys appoint to determine what exactly that means. So if you guys approve this resolution, the next step would be your appointments to the committee.
Okay, any questions for Sarah on that?
Yes.
Do you have a couple of questions? One is, I don't have it, I'm sorry, I don't have it open right now, but I wanted to see if the, if I read or write, you have two-year terms for the numbers?
Yes, sir.
And why two-year, why not four, along with your council members' election terms? Just curious.
I copied another one, and that's what it said.
Okay. So, thought about that, and obviously, we have the districts as well, and as something from a council perspective, I know we have, you know, artists throughout the city, but I know, I think there's a higher number of people down in the crap out area as well. So we had at-large as another term, or I'm sorry, we did not have as large, districts sitting here for council districts, but maybe at-large could be considered by this body as well, just something I was thinking of. Those are my only two, my only two points.
Anybody else? Phil?
Good point.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, and to your point, the usually typically a two-year term because you get into a committee or even, or folks volunteering and all that, you know, can always be reappointed, but you go longer than that, sometimes people get a little, a little sour on it, so, but that's a good, good point with...
I'm open, just wanted to discuss.
Sure.
So do you want us to go back and, I don't know what to do now?
Well, I'd like to discuss them, and I was just, just a thought I was throwing out there, I'm okay, I just wanted to see if...
As long as, can someone, you know, if they're serving two years, can they be...
Oh, yes, it says in there that it can be renewed.
Yeah, renewed, definitely, right.
Yeah.
So I just thought it might be easier procedurally, that was it.
I'd no like the idea of it being at-large though, the district, that way you get the best of all by...
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. Okay, so is there interest in the council to change it to at-large? I'll, I'll, somebody can make a motion on that, but...
Right. So I just was trying to understand that, what you were looking for, were you looking for one person from the district and one person from the district at-large? Or are you looking, everybody's position could be either in the district or at-large? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly, yes.
I think at, at-large, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and again, that can be brought up in a motion, so.
Okay. See if we can pull this up here. Well, I guess I'll, I'll make the motion to approve a resolution to create the Milton Cultural Art Committee, MCAC, Agenda Item Number Sixteen Dash Two Thirty Nine, with the change for appointees to be at-large rather than by district.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for approval as read into the record from Councilmember Coats, with second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sudi, if you'll please sound the next new business item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, extending until December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, an existing moratorium barring the acceptance of applications for conceptual plan approval for subdivisions located within the five-acre road zone. This is Agenda Item Number Sixteen Two Three Six. The public hearing was held today at this meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the resolution that we discussed at the public hearing. This would impose the moratorium as discussed until December sixth of two thousand and sixteen on an existing moratorium that governs the Highway Nine area. This moratorium would end at the earliest date of either December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, approval by the city council of an additional moratorium following another public hearing, any affirmative action of the council terminating the moratorium earlier, or, and as contemplated, the adoption of an amendment to the zoning ordinance with respect to the development patterns for properties within the five-acre road zone. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Open up questions, Rick and then Jeff.
Ken, do you foresee that we're gonna be able to get through the process by December sixth with the text amendments and having those before us to approve prior to that?
It's a great question, councilmember, and it's a, it's a question I do not know the answer to. I think that may be one that I would need my community development director or someone from staff to answer.
Mr. Mayor, through you, right now, the schedule is that this will come to the city council on November twenty-first, but that's contingent on the Planning Commission approving it at their meeting next week. We do have a very full agenda next week for the Planning Commission, so I can't speak for them to say that indeed it will pass through them at that meeting onto you in November.
Okay. And if for some reason it doesn't, Councilmember Moore, we would bring you back another one.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, that was the question I was gonna...
Anybody else? Me? Bert?
Ken, just to address one of the public comments, I mean, by Mr. Carmen, this moratorium, voting on this this evening doesn't, doesn't alter anything with the five-acre agreement, it actually puts it in hold.
It maintains the status quo, there's no action being taken with respect to land use there now, except to maintain the status quo until these zoning code revisions are completed.
We just limit...
All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, extending until December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, an existing moratorium barring the acceptance of applications for conceptual plan approval for subdivisions located within the five-acre road zone. Agenda Item Number Sixteen Dash Two Three Six.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Moore for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you will please sound the next new business item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution adopting the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Update, two thousand and sixteen, Agenda Item Number Sixteen Two Four Zero. I do have one public comment card, and that comes from Ms. Laura Bentley.
Hi there, Laura Bentley, twenty-five hundred Bethany Church Road. I just want to express my appreciation for us reaching this update. I know that councils worked on it, Councilmember Thurman was the lead, and I am sure that you will find this, this to be a successful update. Planning Commission, citizens and the CPAC, there were more than thirteen meetings dating back to December. They were all well-attended, there was fair and lively debate, compromise was reached, and, and it's captured in the document that I read as the final copy. I do have one small request, and I apologize for even bringing this up because I went to all those meetings, but it's just to add that rule, the word rural back into, if you could just insert it in front of the word heritage in the vision statement. It's just a word that I think is near and dear to many people's hearts. If it doesn't cause too much of a flap, I strongly support this update, and I hope that you will hold it to all your major decisions. There's security in using the comp plan as your guide, there's predictable and consistent land use. I have to admit that reflecting back on the discussion of last Monday night at the work session with regard to special use permits, I was disappointed in that. I think special use permits are in violation of our comp plan, so as you sit today and consider that, I hope that, first and foremost, that this comp plan that we have all worked very hard on will be respected and turned to. Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, close the hearing on that, and then, ours is not a hearing, but Michelle?
Hey, good evening. Thanks to Laura, she mentioned all of the meetings that we've had since last year. We had our kickoff meeting in November of last year, and then we followed that up with several CPAC meetings. We came to a work session, a joint work session with council and CPAC in July eighteenth, and we got a lot of comments. As you remember, we talked a lot about land use and land use categories and so on, and we took all of those comments, and we had a new draft for August tenth. And then in August, on August fifteenth, we came to council, and we got an approval to transmit the document to the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia DCA. They've had their review period, and they have approved our comprehensive plan. They deemed our plan compliant with all of the regulations, and so we are free to adopt before October thirty-first. So we are here tonight to, for your consideration, to adopt this comprehensive plan.
Okay, and I know Councilmember Thurman was, well, our appoint, or on behalf of council there, I did want to bring up, and then it was also mentioned in public comment about, you know, the vision statement, there'd been some discussion, and I think it would be nice to have, you know, even if it's one word rural or whatever, in there, I'd like to consider that.
What we did is, we pretty much used the, the same vision as we have for the city, so I, I do support adding the rural before the word heritage, and I support adding it here and also adding it on our, our city vision statement, quite frankly, so that we're consistent.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
Support that.
Okay.
Not far as good.
All right. Open up.
Would you help?
I would say, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution adopting the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Update for two thousand and sixteen with the addition of the word rural before the word heritage under our comprehensive plan vision.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Thurman, as read into the record, with second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Matt?
Yeah, I, I have one problem with this thing, and it's nothing that you did, Michelle, and I know there were a lot of people that worked on it as well, but on page seventy-six of eighty-eight, we talked about this last time, was item LUDC eleven on the conservation subdivision ordinance where it says it was completed, and in the instructions or in the description, it says a consultant was hired to develop the ordinance, the city council unanimously denied the measure by a vote of seven, nothing, and then there was, it says there was significant public opposition to the ordinance that was presented at that time. What I don't like about that is, one is it says it was completed when it did not get completed, it was failed, essentially. The other thing is that it assumes an intent for the reason for my vote on December the seventh, and by that last sentence in those notes, there was significant public opposition to the ordinance that presented at the time. There's also significant public support for that as well, and to state that we made a decision at that time which went entirely against the motion that was made at that point in time, and I wrote down everything everybody up here said at that night, and the whole point was, is that we would look at the ordinance, and in the motion, it was a denial as it was written, and that was said over and over and over and over again. I've got it highlighted right here, where even Karen, on the tape at one fifty-five thirty, you said that a use permit might be more appropriate for such an idea. Longoria, you said the same thing, stating that you liked many parts of it, it was a good thing, but it was messed up on some of the details, which is what you said. But your motion specifically says, was, "But I'm going to move that we deny this CSO proposal as written," and that was the statements that were being said. You said it twice. At two oh five fifty, I said there are details in this that need to be hashed out. At that night, on December seventh, we did not hash those out. At that point in time, Bill Lusk even said at two twelve twenty-six, the issue was the way it was written, and the comment, and he said he still heard the same common thread, that I propose it as it is written. Two fourteen forty-eight, Rick Moore, he said, "You think as written." Two nineteen thirty, he said it again, you know, "Did you reject it as written?" Two twenty-three ten, Karen, he said again, "If it's properly written," which is not currently, which is what you said. Even Bert Hewitt at two twenty-four twenty-four, he said he liked the idea of a use permit at that point in time. I know that we went through a battle with this, but I don't want our history to be rewritten as it is right here in this particular phrase about the conservation development design that we went through. And as the motion is currently made, unless the maker of motion is willing to change this, I have a feeling that you're not, but on that perspective, whether it's, is what it is, I can't support something that has something in there that I don't believe is true, because I voted for this with the belief that this council was intending to rewrite something according to the conservation design as we were directed to do according to the two thousand and thirty comprehensive plan prior to this one, or the one we're currently in. So, it's an important thing. I mean, these little phrases get into what we do and how we behave, and I'm not gonna let an idea come before us, go through, that isn't true, or someone trying to suggest that I voted for something in a way that I did not intend. I didn't deny it because of public opposition. I denied it with the intent to make it better and to rewrite it, as many of us up here stated. So if we are to change this, according to the history of what we have and the, and the record that we have on our public records, I think that if we were to change it, I don't think it should stay, say completed. I think it should be, you know, in progress, or what do you call it?
Postponed would be the option.
Postponed would be another way, I would just accept postponed, and that last phrase that's in that sentence should state, if we are going to be honest with what happened on that night, there was significant public opposition and support to the ordinance that was presented at that time, because if we're gonna be honest to all residents, we need to be honest about all residents of where it was. It was a controversial issue, but I'm not gonna sit here and say that we're disregarding half the people that were highly in favor of it. So from that perspective, the way the motion is made and the way this states, I can't support that. If we are willing to change this as a body, then I'd be glad to. I support what we talked about apart, about adding rural into the, the vision statement and the city, city vision statement in here as well, but this is a, these are subtle things. These are things that really affect not just what we do up here, but how we behave and treat each other and our community, and as I see something here and look at it, especially with all the controversy that we had, I think it's important that we be honest of what it actually is, and rather than just give it a death knell because some people might think that it is or should be destroyed, I think it still is an idea that has merit. And as, as several of us said on December seventh, that we believed at that time that it did have merit, and either we were telling the truth then, we're not now, or we weren't telling it then, but we are now. We have to decide which one we're doing, but that our history is that, these are the words that we said, and they do not line up with what this says here. So as where it is, I can't support it, even if, I mean, heck, I'm Catholic, the Pope doesn't always say things that are right, but if he comes up and says something that I don't believe to be true, I can't support that either. On matters of faith, he knows, but he's not very good in economics, I'll tell you that. This is a very similar situation, and being honest with this, I can't support something that I don't think is honest, even if one line states so.
Jeff?
So, Matt, I respect everything you just said. I have a little bit different take on it, because the, the purpose of this document is, is, has so much, it's, it's so much bigger than that one item. I don't think anything, no language in the document is prohibiting us from, from considering a conservation subdivision ordinance again, so it's not like we're, you know, burying something and preventing its, its rediscussion. I also don't think, I mean, we, we can, we can get to a level of, you know, crazy detail with how we word certain things. I mean, the fact that it says that there was a lot of opposition to it is true, okay? It leaves out the fact that there was a lot of support for it, and it also leaves out the fact that some people didn't care. So, I mean, do we want to be complete and say some people were for it, some people are against it, and some people didn't care? Because then it starts sounding a little silly, and, and so I just think that the, the work that's gone into this document is so much bigger than this one thing, and this one thing, I don't think it's not, it's not lying, it's not stating a falsehood, it's... Matt, you're looking at me.
We're not looking at you. Come on.
Okay, well, I believe what I just said, and I wish you would support the document the way it's written because there was a lot of energy and effort put into that. Your comments notwithstanding, I understand that, that you do have, want to take, accept... Your comments notwithstanding, I understand that, that you do have, want to take exception to that, but, but it's just so much more of a document than for this one thing. So.
Karen?
I believe that this needs to be marked completed. I believe that we went through the very long process. That doesn't mean it might not come back in some kind of future and some kind of use permit or some other way, but I believe that the agenda, the item on here was completed. I would support if we wanted to say the city council unanimously denied the proposed ordinance by a vote of seven to nothing rather than the measure, this proposed ordinance. The measure says, makes it sound like the whole concept was denied, whereas the proposed ordinance was what we actually denied. So, I would support changing the word measure to proposed ordinance, but I believe it needs to stay completed.
Anybody else? I just want to thank everybody that worked so hard, staff, planning commission, volunteers, committee members. So, with that, we have, Bill?
Talking about just one word. And five minutes ago, we added one word to the document here. Words mean something. And if we're, if we're going to add one word, and I agree with it, I think there's evidence here from our discussion on the 7th of December that we weren't approving that document as it was written. And I think that's clear in the language that was used on that night. I think the, it can be reasonably implied or interpreted from that language and from the comments made by several of us up here at that time, that it was not completed, that that task was not completed, that it was implied that it was going to come back to be rewritten and revisited. That's, that's my recollection, that's what I get from the statements that were made on that night. So, it's one, one word, completed. I'd say it's postponed. It's just one word.
Joe?
I agree with you 100% Bill. Words mean a lot. When we made that motion, we were denying it. We were denying that ordinance. Now, we could have postponed it, and I agree with you. There was merit in what was there, it just wasn't put together right. And I don't think that we need to rehash all that right now. I'm just saying that the document that we're voting on right now is so much bigger and so much more important than this particular detail. And I don't think anything that we've captured in the document is wrong. I'd, I'd support making the change Karen discussed, because I would agree. We, we denied what was written down in that ordinance. We didn't deny the concept, okay? I just, I, I don't want this to be a big issue.
Just to continue that point, you say we didn't deny the concept. Is that what you said?
Well, we denied the ordinance. We didn't deny the concept. The concept wasn't what the ordinance was. The ordinance was an instance of trying to put that concept in, on paper.
Sure, sure. So, would you, would you agree that that needs to be put in the, in the language there then, that the concept was denied?
I think if you just say that we denied the proposed ordinance, that tells you right there that it was the specific document was denied. Because I think we denied the proposed ordinance clearly.
Or, or instead of completed, you might have just said it failed. I mean, I think Matt mentioned that.
It's more honest. Definitely more honest.
And again, this is a big document.
I'm happy with it as the motion stated.
And to, to the point that was discussed, you know, things can be brought up, back up too, if it, you know, so.
We don't succeed only when we pass an ordinance. If we fail an ordinance, if we vote against it, we've succeeded in putting together a concept, an idea, proposing it, debating it, and voting on it. Not all work ends with a four, an affirmative vote. Some work ends with a no vote.
The way I see things, this is quite honest, I'm sorry, but, you know, the residents that I see, when we do a comprehensive plan, as one resident said, that we should follow a comprehensive plan, and the current comprehensive plan suggested 14 different times that we should implement a conservation subdivision ordinance, then the way I see myself as being measured is our ability as a group to successfully do what we promised we would do in the conservation, comprehensive land use plan that we currently have. We did not do what we promised we would do in the comprehensive plan as it was directed to us 14 different times. And I've said that over and over again, over and over again, that I will do what I said I would do in the comprehensive plan. So, the fact is, is that we did not complete what we said we would do in the comprehensive plan, which is directly, this is a comprehensive plan, that told us to do the conservation subdivision, and it did not happen, therefore it is not complete. I mean, let's not go into the definition of what is is right now. You know, I'm just like, from a word perspective with where it is, it's a simple word. But this right now is starting to define our history as we go forward. We've got a 10-year history right now. And we are sitting here, and I look at it, and I see this, as a consultant was hired to develop the ordinance, the city council unanimously denied the measure by a vote of seven to nothing. Both of those lines are true, okay? However, if it said denied seven to nothing with the intent to have it rewritten, as was stated here over and over again, especially in your motion, which you made to me then, and I believed you then, that I sit here and want to look at and honestly want to do, make sure it's honest. But to sit there and say that there was significant public opposition to the ordinance that was presented at that time is a pressure, trying to tell people why I voted the way I did on that ordinance at that time, and I will not accept someone trying to say that I voted for no because of public opposition.
What's going to happen if we vote on this and approve it, Matt?
If you vote on or approve it, I am going on the record for stating the truth, as my residents and constituents demand it.
All right, I'm going to reel this in. We've got a motion and a second. You know, everybody's, has the ability and has had the ability to speak. If you, you know, you can either vote for it, against it, you can speak your, your, you know, whatever you want to say. Karen, I believe you've got a, you have a motion for approval right now, and I have a second. Is there any more discussion or?
I would like to ask that we change the, the word measure to proposed ordinance and leave everything else as is, other than adding the word rural that we had added before heritage.
Okay, will you remove your second?
Yes, I'll remove my second.
So, you're modifying your, state your motion again, Karen.
I make a motion that we approve the adoption of the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan update 2016, agenda item number 16-240, with the addition of the world, word rural before heritage. And on page 76, to change LUDC 11 to say the city council unanimously denied the proposed ordinance by a vote of seven to nothing.
Do I have a second?
No, I didn't take out the last line.
Do I have a second on this motion that's been brought forward?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Thurman, as read into the record, with a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
It's, I believe it was Lusk and Kutz were nays. Okay, that's five to two. Thank you. All right. Siddy, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution adopting the capital improvements element 2016 annual update relating to the city's impact fee program 2016, agenda item number 16241, Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross.
Okay, good evening again. This document, as you know, is a requirement by the state for municipalities that collect impact fees. We adopted an impact fee ordinance October of 2015, and so we are required to do these annual updates every year, annual. So, we had our consultants prepare this CIE annual update, and we came before you in August, and we got an approval to transmit. The state and regional agency reviewed this document and noted that we were in compliance with all of the state and regional regulations, and so we are free to adopt this document as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Bill?
I see the one comment that DCA came up with was incorporated.
You saw the footnotes?
Right.
Yeah, they missed it. Correctly.
Good job, good job.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Now, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution adopting the capital improvements element 2016 annual update relating to the city's impact fee program 2016, agenda item number 16241.
Second.
Okay, a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Kutz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Siddy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Siddy, if you could please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, establishing a per diem rate for members of the ethics panel, agenda item number 16242, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Section 2885 of the Code of the City of Milton, that's our ethics provisions, provides as follows. This is subsection B. Members of the ethics panel shall be paid a per diem for each meeting or hearing they are required to attend. If a hearing lasts multiple days, then the ethics panel attorney shall receive a separate per diem for each day of hearing attendance. The per diem shall be the same for each ethics panel attorney and shall be approved by the city council. The city council has not done that yet. It is our recommendation that the city council go ahead and approve a per diem for the ethics panel members as set forth in this resolution, and it would be a rate of $100 per hearing or per meeting day.
Okay, there any questions around this? Comments? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 16242. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for approval, second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Siddy, if you'll please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution and agreement by the City of Milton appointing Gerard and Davis, LLP, as city attorneys, agenda item number 16243, Mr. Steve Croco.
Good evening. Good evening. This is part of the item moving the rates from the old one from 150 to 175, and as a result, we need to renew this agreement, correct? Ken?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I proposed the rate adjustment as part of the budget process, but candidly, it does need to be documented. And this is my recommendation of how we document that rate adjustment.
Can we just, to clarify, make sure everyone knows, you know, based on where the number comes from and compare that with, you know, I believe it's very well market rate, but just to, can we speak on that for a minute?
We did do a, a study of the numbers, which I don't have at my fingertips right now, and that 175 rate still fell a little bit below market.
I would say it's, you know, and on the private sector, that's definitely on the, on the low end. Anybody else question? Okay.
You didn't charge us to review this document, did you?
Oh, no. Hope not. But the old rate. At the old rate.
All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number 16-243.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt, and want to thank Councilmember Longoria because it's probably real hard to publicly step up and make a motion to approve to pay a lawyer.
Well, actually, we had a citizen, we had a citizen that brought up the idea of internalizing some of this work, and I did a real quick spreadsheet, and instead of saving money, it actually made us spend more money, so I thought, I thought it was worthwhile to do this.
We have looked at that before, and you, you not only spend as much or more, but then you don't have the, the assets and whatnot to put from and the experience. So, okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Siddy, if you'll please call the next new business item.
Next item is a council discussion regarding possible charter changes to section 1.12B40 and section 6.11B of the Milton Charter, agenda item number 16244, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I wanted to bring this item to you. We have been sort of getting ready for the upcoming bond referendum, and as part of that, we obviously have engaged the services of a bond attorney, Mr. Roger Murray. He is actually here this evening. But we have determined that there may be some language in the charter that needs to be clarified. You may recall the last time that the charter was modified with respect to our, the ability to increase or to adjust the millage it was done by the legislature, which of course always has the authority to modify the city's charter. Well, the city also has the ability to modify its charter by way of home rule. We have done that before. In fact, we did that not too long ago by way of back-to-back public meetings, approval at two back-to-back meetings, publishing it in the paper, et cetera. That is a recommendation we may make based upon what we have identified in the charter as some, the best way I can say it is, is a lack of clarity with what the General Assembly did the last time. We know what they intended to do, and I say that with all candor to you. I just don't think they, they nailed it perfectly. And so, Mr. Mayor, would it be agreeable to the counsel if Mr. Murray came to the podium and just made a short presentation to the council as far as what he is recommending that the city do?
Yes, sir. We could be.
Good evening, everybody. Well, I think Ken nailed it pretty much, as he indicated, the General Assembly made some charter amendments recently. And as part and parcel of those charter amendments, they tried to clarify that the general obligation bonds were not part and parcel of the millage cap. And they drafted some language and they put it in the charter, and I was reviewing that, and first of all, I don't think it was entirely as clear as it could be. And second of all, they added the language in one section, but not in another section. So, what Ken and I think we should do is just have a home rule amendment amending the charter, just clarifying the General Assembly's intent, and that is, again, to exclude general obligation bonds from the millage cap.
If you look in your agenda packet, members of the council, you'll see the two paragraphs we're talking about, and you can see where they added language, for instance, like in 6.11B, well, forgive me, 1.12B, they added, and Roger checked me on this, but for ad valorem taxes, I'm on the top line, for ad valorem taxes on real property, for operating budget purposes, that was the language they added.
Operating budget purposes.
And we're proposing the clarification, not general obligation bond purposes. That's, I think that's what they meant, but they just didn't say that. And so, we try to be very conservative and want the, the charter, if any document should be really clear, it ought to be our charter. And that's why we're proposing to add that language. And then down in 6.11B, which has basically equivalent language that you'd want to see mirrored between 112 and 611, they left out the operating budget purposes altogether. So, we're, we're recommending adding that phrase in and including the parenthetical. So, they're consistent, and they add up, and that's, I hope everybody sees, it's fairly, fairly clear, I think, what we're attempting to do, and it just make the document read better, and does exactly what I think everyone thinks it should.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a, obviously being in finance and understanding what, you know, investors are looking for when it comes to investing into general obligation bonds, they want to make sure they have that clarity and know exactly what a city is doing, and having clear language like this, I think would only help us in the future if we decide to have more of those. So, I agree.
Karen?
When we were working on the charter, the intent was to not be able to raise the millage rate unless the voters approved a rate increase. And with the general obligation bond purposes, they would be able to, you know, approve it.
They've already voted on that. That's exactly right. That's why typically it's, it's not included in the cap, because yes, the voters have approved it. In effect, that is the millage increase.
And what we wanted to do is to make sure that, that a future council could not just raise the millage rate without the voters approving it.
Correct, yeah.
General obligation debt is the quintessential direct democracy, if you think about it.
Karen?
Mr. Mayor, if the council is so willing, we would just, I would request a motion for us to move forward with the process of bringing to you all a charter amendment.
Okay, I think this is designed by the council, so I'll open up for a motion. Matt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do give instruction to move forward with possible changes to the charter amendment regarding Agenda Item Number 16-244.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to move forward on these changes to be brought back to us from Councilmember Koots, second from, was that Morik or from Councilmember Morik? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Now, city, if you'll please sound the next new business item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 8 Ethics Code of the City of Milton, Code of Ordinances, Agenda Item Number 16245. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is something we have discussed at work session a time or two, and I did ask that it go on your regular agenda, but I do think that if the council wants to move forward with this, I'm looking just for direction. Again, I would bring it back for a public hearing. But here is what we had discussed at the work session, and that was the notion of modifying the city of Milton's ethics code to allow what candidly other municipal and county jurisdictions allow, which is, in the event that an ethics complaint is filed against a member of the council or anyone, but I will be very candid with you, my experience has been, ethics complaints don't typically get filed against staff, they get filed against members of the governing authority is what my experience has been. That if an ethics complaint is filed against members of the governing authority, and they are required to obtain independent counsel because as a rule, the city attorney will not represent you in situations when you have been named in an ethics complaint, for a variety of reasons, and if we need to go into those, I can, but I just, trust me on that when I tell you, that's not what I typically do. That in those situations, if in fact the ethics complaint is dismissed, or it is found to be unfounded, in other words, you either, it is either dismissed against you, or it is a win, the official wins, that there would be an entitlement to recoup attorney's fees. In this case, the direction I got from the city council was to peg the number at no more than $5,000. That is actually on the low end with respect to what other jurisdictions do. I think maybe Marietta goes as high as 15,000. I know Forsyth County goes to 10,000. What you asked me to do is bring you back some language that pegged the number at 5,000, and that is what I have done, and so I wanted you to see it. I'm not asking you to take official action to approve this evening, but if in fact you would like to see this in a final resolution format and bring it back to you, I'm prepared to do that.
Okay, I just have a question. I'll just speak on behalf of myself as being the recipient of an ethics complaint, early on, which was proven unfound, but unfounded, but I'm going to assume this would not go retroactive to prior expenses and same complaints.
Yeah, that's right, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's, that's right. The expectation of this ordinance that I have prepared, and my expectation in any event would have been, this only has prospective applications. A new change to the code, something you all have not authorized before.
Okay, Matt?
Yeah, I need to make a statement here. So, I talked with the city attorney regarding this item, and I want to make it known that I will recuse myself from this item due to a pending ethics complaint against me. I believe personally this complaint is frivolous. I have evidence of substantial age that it is frivolous, and while this vote tonight will not affect me when it is found to be frivolous, I will have an obligation to act in accordance with the code to recoup the taxpayer expenses incurred. Even though this vote tonight will not affect me because it is pending, I will avoid any appearance of impropriety, and I will recuse myself.
Understood.
Phil?
Ken? Yes, Ken, in the third whereas. First two sentence says, well, goes in the second line. Local government official acting in official capacity is required to hire outside counsel to assert a legal position. A little bit fuzzy.
They choose us to, choose us or may, rather than require to.
Oh, okay, forgive me. Well, that's just out of the case. I mean, so that's out of, that's out of some of the authority, we're buttressing the legal authority for that. And this, but I think candidly, the way I interpret that language is, is if, it depends candidly on the, on the nature of the ethics complaint itself. I mean, if you feel as a city official that to adequately defend yourself in what I would consider to be a quasi judicial proceeding, which involves an ethics panel, due process considerations applying, and you feel like you need to retain counsel to do that, then I think you would have met that standard.
Would you say?
Does that make, does that make sense? Is anybody, is anybody absolutely required to obtain counsel in part of the ethics panel? No, you're not. You're not required to obtain counsel in a superior court action either, but I strongly recommend that you do.
So, the requirement lies with the one accused?
Yes, yes. You would be making a determination.
You would have a choice.
You would have a choice.
That he felt required to.
But, but if in fact you feel the need to, to do that by way of making that choice, then it is a cost of the business of the city to reimburse you if you prevail.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, and I do, you know, I do agree, not just because of past history, but, you know, when you do take on a position, a part-time elected position, where you're not very much compensation, but a lot of work, there, you know, there is always like an insurance policy, so it, you know, as long as it is deemed frivolous, then I think it's fair to compensate for it.
Right, I think that's a thread, that's a theme in the cases where you see this, though, is, is the, your position has to be vindicated, has to be successful.
Right.
If you're not successful, then the people should not.
Right, if you truly did do something unethical, then you should obviously be responsible for paying the bill. All right, so you just need direction?
Right, if, if this is where the council wants to be, and, and, you know, you'd sort of given me this direction formally, now I've brought it to you in a resolution, if this is where you want it to be, then the next step will be a true public hearing. And, yes?
Okay. No?
Just a quick clarification. I think when we looked at this and we went through the, with the work session, you told us that most jurisdictions of any, any size have this type of option in there, correct?
Yeah, well, what I did was I had, we had looked at, and I had just quoted you some examples, Dunwoody, Douglasville, Forsyth, Henry County, Kennesaw, Liberty County, Marl County, Marietta, Madison, all of them have variations on this. They're all different. I will tell you this, every one of them's different, but I think the council was wanting to make sure, first of all, we're not trying to take on some sort of outlier position that no one's ever heard of, and it's not that at all. In fact, some of them are even more aggressive at it than what you all are proposing. I mean, 5,000 just about won't get a attorney letter drafted, so I mean, you're not talking about a lot of money.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we direct the city attorney to prepare this for a public hearing, and that's Agenda Item Number 16-245.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Thurman is read into the record with a second by Councilmember Lausser. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Councilmember Koots recuse.
Thank you.
Understood.
City, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of subdivision plat revisions approval. This is for Kennewick Park Land Lots 757, final plat, create 13 lots, 2.89 total acres, 4.5 lots per acre. Mayfair Estates, Land Lots 268, 269, and 270, final plat, create 26 lots, 31.69 total acres, .82 lots per acre. And finally, 15355, Hopewell Road, Land Lots 474, minor plat, create two lots, 2.63 total acres, .75 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 16246. I do have three public comment cards. Do you want to hear those?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and take public comment.
First comes from Mr. Cleveland Slater.
Cleveland Slater, 13670 Bethany Road, Milton. During last week's discussion regarding flag lots, excuse me, a local surveyor with over 30 years of experience subdividing property noted they had never developed a lot where they ran the stem of a flag pole parallel with an existing road. He continued by stating, I understand this was a creative use of the rule and probably a loophole. Let me state that my comments are in respect to Hopewell Road Minor Plat Number 3 on the list. I'm going to talk about 10 checkpoints that we had that should have slowed down this process for further consideration, and those 10 checkpoints would prevent developers from gaming the system and using this potential loophole again. First, the only purpose of the dual frontage created by this flag lot is to avoid compliance with the three acre minimum requirements for lots without frontage on a paved road. We all know that. We know the game that's being played here. But this one is different than the ones we've seen recently inside subdivisions where there was a paved road. This one acre lot is accessed, accessed from an unpaved road, violating the idea that the bad is cured when access is provided from a new paved subdivision road. That bad being, the unpaved road cannot accommodate as much stuff, whether that's traffic, density, police cars, or fire trucks. And if the access from the unpaved road is preferred to access from the paved road due to a perceived safety issue, there's something simply wrong with the configuration of the lot. The configuration should be fixed and not another exemption created to our three acre minimum requirements. We know that the three acre requirement could be interpreted, interpreted differently. There's a quote in red on page two, I think it's page two, I'm not going to read it, it's there. We know that this could be interpreted differently and applied differently. Number three, the director is, approval is required when access and frontage are not on the same public street. That's Section 5114. That was the first opportunity to say no. Subdivisions must comply with the comprehensive plan that confirms the requirements for three acre lots and gravel roads, and that's, that's reflected in page 18 and page 61 of the current draft. I don't know where it's at in our, in the one that exists now, but I'm sure it's there. That's Section 5115, conformance to city comprehensive plan. Number five, the director must approve the configuration of the lot. The director should not approve the configuration of a lot when the intent of the configuration is to subdivide a track into a lot that circumvents the intent of counsel. Again, an opportunity to stop and say no. Number six, double frontage lots require director's approval. Approval is limited to two unique conditions, and neither of those conditions exist in this situation. Number seven, council must confirm all plats before building permits can be issued. Council should not confirm a plat that does not comply with the zoning and subdivision ordinances and the intent of council as reflected in our ordinances. Approval is not required. The applicant may, may appeal a denial, and the setting of precedent can be avoided. The plat does not comply with the real view shed requirements. Those were amended recently, but this plat was submitted under the existing real view shed requirements, and the plat should reflect the existing real view shed requirements. Number 10, and probably more important, interpretations of the ordinance are set precedent. Caution should be exercised. With a variance or rezoning does not create precedent, an interpretation does and becomes the law until council amends the, the ordinance. I've provided copies of the plat so you can see exactly what's being proposed. Also provided a blow up of a couple of points on there where you can see that the plat was acknowledged by the community development director, and this plat has been recorded by Fulton County, by the way, but this is, this is the second time it's been recorded. Staff made them go back and make some revisions, so it can be recorded again to correct these issues. But it has not been assigned approving that it complies with Milton zoning ordinances, conditions of zoning, and subdivision regulations. So, I think you need to ask staff, does this indeed comply with subdivision and zoning requirements? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. City, if you'll call the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ms. Laura Bentley.
Hi there, Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. The Hopewell plat is, violates council intent. I understand that this plat may have been in the pipeline prior to the moratorium, but the following items concern me. Staff's interpretation of Milton's zoning ordinances regarding gravel roads does not reflect citizen desires and council intent. It has become clear that staff has discretion in these interpretations, yet we continue to see gaming of the system. This is very disappointing. The minor subdivision plat process has been exploited with these plats. This owner has taken two contiguous tracks with four parcels, divided them into two minor plats in an effort to avoid the major plat requirements. This abuse needs to be addressed. Since this plat was in the pipeline before view shed requirements were lifted from minor plats, view shed adherence should be enforced. Finally, I realize that text amendments are scheduled to address protecting our gravel roads. This is protection that citizens thought we already had. It is my hope that council intent and staff interpretation will soon be aligned so that our gravel road neighborhoods will continue to be the special assets to Milton that we love. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city, if you'll please, we have one more speaker.
And that will be Mr. Scott Reese.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll open up then for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scroll through these. As you know, the, the system that we've put in place is that if it's a minor plat, it's under the consent agenda, and then major plats come for consideration, individual consideration. So, we have two major plats to be reviewed tonight, and then the third is a deferred minor plat that you asked that staff work with the city attorney to make sure indeed that all regulations and ordinances were adhered to. So, that's why you see it tonight under the new business end of the agenda. So, having said that, here is the location map of the three that we're going to discuss, and the first is Kennewick Park, and I'm going to call Jimmy Sanders up, who is the staff member who does review these, so to make a small presentation to answer any questions. Jimmy?
Kennewick Park is on Highway 9 at the north end of the city. It is part of a, a portion of that subdivision that was left out several years ago, back before Milton became a city, and it's now being developed under C2T4. So, 13 lots under, under that existing zoning. The next plat is Mayfair Estates. Mayfair Estate, Mayfair Estates is on Birmingham Highway, 26 lots. This was, came in for LDP back in February of 2014, so even though we, it doesn't, it came in before the real view shed, so there's not the real view shed shown on this particular one. One thing to note is that one of the sheets depicts the road improvements that aren't there yet. For some reason, the developer had some issues with trying to determine whether he wanted to build the subdivision on the opposite side of the road, so he didn't build his left turn lanes. He got approval from the DOT to actually allow this plat to be platted without the improvements in there, but we have bonds for that work in cash, $780,000 total that we have from the developer, so there should be sufficient funding there. Should he not build those, we have funds to actually get that work done. And then the last one is the plat that we discussed last month there on Hopewell Road. So, if you guys have any questions.
Just maybe, if you don't mind, just explaining to you-
Just maybe, if you don't mind explaining to just specifically where these three are, just in general in the city. I think that...
Kennewick is on Highway nine at the north end on the right-hand side, just before you get to Forsyth County. And Mayfair Estates is on Birmingham Highway just south of Blue Valley, beyond the left-hand side. And the other minor plat is at the intersection of Thompson and Hopewell.
Okay. I'll open up Rick.
Mr. Mayor, can we, I guess what I'd ask, can we vote on these, even though it's one item, can we vote on them individually, consider them individually versus consider them as written as one agenda item?
I would prefer that also.
Just to confirm that with Ken, is that good, Ken?
It's perfectly appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So what we can do now, I'll continue if there's any questions specifically on any of these three, you can ask, or if someone, if we want to go to a motion, then we can make a motion individually on this. Bill?
Jimmy, regarding Mayfair Estates, there's fifty-one lots platted here. I assume the twenty-six are lots one through twenty-six, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'd have to go back and look at the plat. There's a, as you go into the subdivision, it kind of tees off, and then I think...
Right.
They didn't plat the part on the right and didn't plat the part on the left, so there are probably two more future phases. So it may not be consecutive numbers, but a total of twenty-six lots.
So is all of the infrastructure going in?
All of the roads are there. The only thing that's not there is the left turn lanes.
Right.
Okay. Rick?
I guess a discussion point on item number three on the Hopewell Road, we brought this up when we considered it before. It appears we're making a change in our process if we're allowing this to be subdivided because the access is clearly going to be now on a gravel road, and in the past, that's what determined really the size of the lot, the minimum of three acres. I think that's what we did in the past.
Okay.
I'm just going to read the email I sent to our city attorney last week, and this is written in regards to the number three, and it says that I cannot support this because I believe it goes against board policy. I have always been told that board policy was part of the decision-making process, especially when the code was, or laws were unclear. In my mind, the board policy concerning properties that are adjacent to both public, both paved and gravel roads has been very clear since prior to our incorporation. If the access to the parcel is from a paved road, then the one acre lot rules apply. If the access was from a gravel road, then the three acre minimum rules apply. And obviously, we have changed that now, so there's always three acres. And I've said basically, I believe that the, that only the city council can set the board policy, and the board policy that I felt like this goes against what the board policy is, and because of that, I cannot support allowing a, approving this subdivision plat because I believe it is not consistent with board policy.
Okay. And again, if we're through questions, we can itemize these, and, you know, I'll take a motion on each one specifically. Do I, Ken, do we need to make a motion to split these up, or just make a motion to approve one?
You don't need to make a motion to split them up. If you simply want to make a motion to approve, number one, however you want to identify them, that's fine. The main thing is to make sure the record's clear of what we're approving and what we're not.
Okay. I'll suggest that we get a motion on the first one, and then we can discuss that specifically if we need to. Karen?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the subdivision plat revisions for the Kennewick Park, land lot seven fifty-seven, two point eight nine, a total acres at a density of four point five lots per acre.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Thurman as read for the item at Kennewick Park, and a second by Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, Sudi. I'll open up the next item on Mayfair Estates.
Make a motion to approve the final plat for Mayfair Estates, land lot two sixty-eight, two sixty-nine, and two seventy, create twenty-six lots and thirty-one point six nine acres.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval on the Mayfair Estates plat as read by Councilmember from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll open up for motion to discussion on the third item. Now, I will make one statement, too. I think as we've gone through this, and, you know, as a city, we learn, sometimes you'll have rules, ordinances, and things that seem to, seem to work or cover things, but over time, you learn, learn that they need to be adjusted or whatever. So whatever the outcome is on this one, I believe we are addressing in the future the intent of what I believe the community and the council wants. So the good news is we're, you know, we're, in the future, we are addressing these things.
I'd just like to ask the city attorney, what happens if this is not approved?
Right.
If we feel like that an error was made, and I understand that our approval of these things is supposed to be more of a rubber stamp, which I have a real problem with, that we rubber stamp anything.
Sure.
Especially rubber stamp. I understand if we have to rubber stamp something that's governed by state law, which is alcohol beverage licenses governed pretty much by state law, but I have a trouble us rubber stamping anything that's governed by local laws.
Right, so...
So...
Point made, and certainly I understood your point earlier, and...
I don't waver too much.
You don't, and I, and I respect your position and respect. I know that all the council probably feels the same, you know, don't put something in front of me to ask me to vote on it if I don't have, you know, discretion to say no. With respect to, you know, the code is not always set up, though, that way. I mean, all of the code, even the appellate rights, as I think ably discussed by maybe the first speaker, talk about if the director's approval, if the director denies, then certain appellate rights flow from that. It's the expectation is that the director will approve this. Then you may ask them, why is it put in front of you? Because the state statute anticipates that the, that the final ratification has to come by the council. But in Milton, we have delegated the actual, what I would call the hardcore review, the meaningful technical review, to staff. And candidly, why this is coming to you is to mainly check a box, that it's now been ratified and can now go down to be recorded. So what happens if the council was, is not to approve it? Councilmember, I, the candid answer is, is I'm not sure, and what I mean by that is, is because I don't know what the owner of the property would do, and so I would probably want to hedge going into all the lengthy legal analysis until that in fact occurs. But I do think there would probably be some consequences. I am extremely reluctant, though, to get up here and tell any council, you must do something. I'm very uncomfortable doing that as your city attorney. I will just tell you, you've seen my analysis. You've seen it probably a couple of times, maybe more than you care to, so you, you know where I feel on this, and I certainly respect Councilmember Thurman, your concerns. They may in fact be shared. But I, I think the appropriate thing to do here, in light of the way your statute is drafted, is to ratify, and then let's fix whatever needs to be fixed to ensure it doesn't happen again.
And I would like to comment, just for the public comment, the public in the audience, that we do have a fairly lengthy synopsis and legal opinion on this, so is that safe to say, Ken?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, that is very safe to say.
Mayor, may I jump in?
Absolutely.
Ken, I just want, I know we discussed this at length, and I just want to, and I've heard it bandied about a little bit today. Is this plating in any way, shape, or form, as far as you could tell, the result of either staff error or creative interpretation?
No, not, not creative interpretation. I mean, listen, it is very typical in local government for there to be delegations of authority for senior-level staffers to make a judgment calls, very mindful of the notion of intent. I get that, Councilmember Thurman, and you have made that point very eloquently to me, and I'm very mindful of that. But with respect to my review of the way staff have interpreted the existing rules that govern the interpretation and guidance of this particular plat, I don't think it's been creative or out of the box, being mindful, of course, that it may be inconsistent with how council members viewed where this needed to go. I get that.
But isn't board policy supposed to be a consideration in determining, especially when things are unclear? That's what I have always been told in the last twenty-five years working with Fulton County, that board policy played a role when, when the rules were not exactly clear, you looked to board policy to determine what it was that the board intended.
And, and Councilmember Thurman, I'm not able to tell you every, every thought process that went through the director's mind on this. Did board or council policy play a part? Probably, but there were probably other factors as well. The best way to hedge against that in the future is to further clarify so there is less discretion. But no, Councilmember Thurman, you're not wrong at all. I would never say that to you. I just can't, I can't duplicate all of the thought process of the director, and I also cannot call it a wrong call.
I think, too, part of the problem on this, which has come to light, is, you know, what we perceive as board policy or intent maybe not be the actual intent that was originally, that something was drafted, and it was a good example in the three acre minimum lot on gravel roads. I know everybody currently, as well as our citizens, feel that, you know, support three acre minimums on gravel roads, and that's, you know, less density and whatnot, versus when that, that ordinance was enacted, it was more on the transportation side. It was, it had nothing to do with density. Back then, they were wanting more density, so...
And, and Mr. Mayor, also, I think it is difficult sometimes for an individual staff member to know what the collective intent of the entire body is. Don't get me wrong, sometimes it's very novel. Sometimes, in fact, the body itself will declare what your intent is, but your intent, Councilmember Longoria, and Councilmember Lusk's vision for this code may have been different. Now, they may be coalescing now, but perhaps it wasn't so clear six months ago or four months ago, and say, I'm not suggesting that's true, I'm suggesting that's a possible result.
Bill?
I was one who has lived on an unpaved road since I've been in the city of Milton. I'm well aware of the policy that we've adhered to over the length of time that I've been here, and it has been a policy. This particular parcel here is an anomaly of some sort, but I think, looking at what was intended here, I think it was an attempt to do something creative. We already looked at the Wood Road situation, and fortunately, that's turned out agreeably, I guess, with the community. I respect the analysis by staff, their professional decisions that they've made on this, but I can't in good conscience support an action like this to somewhat subvert the intent and the policy that we've had for development on unpaved roads.
Joe, and then Rick?
I'm going to let Rick go first.
See, I get neglected on the end here. I guess when I, I look at this, and again, this is no disrespect towards staff or legal counsel, but when I, when I look at this, we've been pretty clear, I guess, in discussions in the past, if the, if the parcel on two sides is gravel road, which this, this would have been, and actually now, the only reason it's got anything is we put a finger, and that's what's being requested for the subdivision, to send it out to a tar road. So it's not like that, and I guess back to the creative analysis, I look at it, I don't see how this would be a normal access because we've already reviewed. That can't be, even the, our director, you can't even have it be a driveway from a safety standpoint. It was, it was recommended that it's not to be used as a driveway. I just think this goes against really what the intent of what we've, and the way we've administered it. The only time we got into a unique case was where someone had extended gravel onto a dirt road. That's what brought the whole case up, but that's, I guess I'm, I'm of the mindset, I look at it, I, I wouldn't support saying that this is a good subdivision of that lot to put a one acre, or just over one acre lot on a dirt road, essentially, is what we're doing.
Joe?
Yeah, so we've had quite a bit of discussion around this. We pointed out that the ordinance was very ambiguous in terms of how we treated lots that were adjacent versus had access to versus all kinds of other things, and so I certainly can understand how the letter of the ordinance, the, if you read it, and it's, you know, with the wording that was available, that we could get to this point. And I think we have also taken steps in the last couple of months to fix that, so I don't think we're heck going to have this problem moving forward. So I can't find fault with staff in terms of their approval of this. And because of that, I, while I don't necessarily like it, I have to support it because I think that staff is doing exactly what they had been instructed to do.
Anybody else?
Can I just, Rick? The part that really gives me, I do, you know, if they had drawn this driveway, instead of going out on Burgess Road, it would, coming down the pole of the flag, that would have been a creative use. This way it's drawn now, I think, is wrong use, but I understand it might be a catch twenty-two as well.
Anybody else? You know, again, as I said earlier, and I totally, and the good news is, I think we're addressing these things. I, you know, based on legal analysis and staff, you know, going by what they've had to work with, and I would agree with the last couple of comments, it may not be something that necessarily want to support, but, you know, we're kind of torn there. Again, we, hopefully, we're tidying things up so that this type of thing won't happen again, and creativity may not be an option. Rick?
One, one last question. So just so I understand, and we understand as a council, we do have the option to vote to not approve this as drawn, correct?
I believe so, Ken.
Councilmember Moore, I certainly do not believe anybody could, could force the council to vote to approve it. I think your code, let me just say this, I think your encode anticipates that the council will approve, will ratify, is the word used, what your director has already approved. I want to repeat some language that is in your code. The final plat shall be considered approved at the time of the certification by the director, and shall be presented for ratification to the mayor and city council at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So again, I think the expectation is here is that you have a professional staff who go over the technical merits based upon the code, and then it comes to you. I am mindful, if anybody is mindful, of your dissatisfaction with perhaps the, the application of the policy or the intent of how these regulations were supposed to be construed. I will tell you that when there is ambiguity or uncertainty in land use regulations, typically a, what is it in baseball, a tie goes to the runner? Typically, in land use regulations, a tie goes to the property owner. And so I think that may be sort of looming in the background as well, as if, that if there was uncertainty, that typically their instincts are going to be to call it in favor of the use of land. But Councilmember Moore, to your point, I can't, obviously can't tell you what to do, but I can certainly make a recommendation. I think I've made that to you in writing as well.
Okay. Yeah, everybody's read Ken's analysis, too, so I'll, no other discussion, I'll just bring it up for a motion. Anybody? Mayor, I move that we approve item number three under consideration of subdivision plat revisions approval. It's one five three five five Hopewell Road Land Lot four seven four.
Second.
Second, all right. Have a motion for approval, Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? The only thing I'd say, I, I support that motion, but being, not that I favor the subdivision of this lot, but by the legal analysis that I've gotten and... and I think liability for the city, coupled with the fact that I think we've got these, moving forward, we won't have the same issue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say. Okay, so, I think you've got four to three. Haven't had one of those in a while. Okay.
I will tell you, you know, I know we got into the zoning some time ago, and, you know, the failure of something to pass. I know that you probably remember this, maybe painfully so, that the failure of something to pass does not exactly mean that it's also the functional equivalent of denial. Everybody remember that discussion?
Right.
I don't know that it necessarily applies here, because here, you don't have sort of the same procedural construct. But in a lot of the, in a lot of the inability for it to be ratified, I think that's just going to be what we're, I'm not, in other words, I'm not going to ask you to make a motion to deny it, is my point. I don't think there's any reason to do that at this point. They will have, to the extent they're going to have an appellate right, I assume it would be...
But we're...
Are we gonna leave that hanging, then?
I don't know that...
Are you saying it was a failure to ratify equates to... No, no, I'm trying to be consistent with the advice I've given you the first time. And perhaps the way to put a bow on it would be to make a motion to deny it, but I'm not trying to think procedurally. We're in a different construct in the zoning, is the point I'm making. We're not in the same...
Okay, help me out here. I believe this just passed four to three, correct?
No.
No, failed.
No, it failed.
Okay, okay. My bad, I thought it was, I thought it said four.
It failed. I'm trying to think if I need to put a, I'm trying to be consistent, but I just haven't thought this far.
Okay. Bill?
The way it's proposed here in the agenda, consideration of subdivision plat revisions approval.
Approval. Approval failed.
Approval failed.
Okay, so, what's your...
And you remember, one of the, one of the issues that I had with respect to the zoning process was our zoning code is very clear that at the end, it either results in approval or denial. I don't think that's the saying with a subdivision plat process. They are different. Zoning's legislative in nature. This is more administrative in nature. So, I'm not as concerned with us having to make a motion for denial right now. If the council wants to make a motion for denial, I don't think there's any legal, anything legally wrong with that, but I'm not going to insist on it.
Okay, so, we did not confirm staff's decision on that.
You did not ratify, you did not ratify the plat.
Ratify it. So, at this point, said just leave it hanging that it was not ratified, or, I mean, it obviously wasn't ratified, but that it was not approved, and...
I would leave it hanging and go back to the property owner and just let him know that it wasn't approved, and see.
Mayor, without ratification, we can't issue a building permit. So, that's where it'll, that's where it'll lie right now.
Okay. All right, anything else on that?
Yeah, just to be very clear, though, before we leave this, though, I want to be very clear, that's the reason I'm not calling it the same as with respect to the zoning.
Because it's not the same.
Because it's not the same. It is a very different process. I just don't want anybody to say your city attorney's doing, saying two different things. Yes?
Joe?
I am sorry, I'm gonna have to ask this question.
Please.
Okay. Because now, I feel like this whole thing is ambiguous. You're telling us that the staff's approval is basically a de facto approval, and it only is searching for ratification by the council. Is it possible, Ken, that we move forward and our vote that we just took now changes nothing? In other words, the fact that we didn't ratify it doesn't really change anything, because the, what the staff did was basically approved it?
Yeah, they did, but the state statute anticipates it's not supposed to be sent to Fulton County for recordation without the governing authorities sanction, and you've not done that now. I don't think this one has been sent down for recordation, has it?
Yeah, it's stamped on...
It's already been recorded.
I think Jimmy said it well.
It was recorded in state losses. It can't be recorded.
Well, that's been your, that's been the process here since the beginning.
That's been the process.
That's since been changed.
Another thing that has been...
Which were changed, yes, changed, the recorders.
I, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still going to be precluded from issuing any sort of building permit?
How can, how's that possible? If it's been accepted by the county? I think this just opens up legal issues.
This was all set forth, you know, earlier, and in some of my, in my writings. So, what I would just say to you, Councilmember Longoria, is this vote obviously has implications with respect to the next step. The next step will be the property owner's step. And I would rather wait and find out what that step is going to be, and then advise you as your attorney, with the attorney-client privilege in place, and not here, if that's okay. I understand your concerns. So, two things. I'm not going to ask you to make a motion to deny, to sort of close the loop, like I will in a zoning matter. Okay? And with respect to that, we'll just have to see, Councilmember Longoria, what the consequence is.
All right. Okay. All right. Anybody on council have any reports, anyone they want to report? Karen?
I wanted to say, I went Saturday afternoon to the event at Brayburn for the police and fire head, and it was a great event. The weather was perfect. The kids absolutely loved the new bouncy house with the Milton Police car on top of it. And, you know, they did a great job of feeding everybody, and I think it's, it really is the type of event that makes a community a community. So, I really appreciate our public safety officials being there and cooking and having the firecocks for the kids to climb in and out of, and, you know, I think it was a very nice event.
Thank you. We had a, it was, I agree with you, it was a great event. Thank you. I appreciate you coming by. It was a, it was a good time had by all.
Yeah, it was. It was good. Thank you for...
Oh, one other, one other thing I want to say is the tour of homes that the Friends of the Milton Library is going to be having, sold out in 15 minutes this morning. So, if you didn't get your ticket, you can get on a wait list, but it sold out in 15 minutes this morning. So, it will obviously be a very good event, and hopefully, next year, they will find a way to allow more than 300 people to come, because there's a lot more than 300 people that wanted to come.
Okay, ma'am?
Went to go vote today, on the first day of elections for the national election, as well as in the city of Milton. And if everybody's not aware, you can go to the Milton Library to go vote. You can go to any of the locations, but that is the closest one to here, obviously. There had to have been about 50 people in line when I went. I was, I had to stand there in line for about an hour and 20 minutes. And that was at 1:00 in the afternoon, which was interesting. So, I heard it was pretty busy this morning, and so that was all day, which was interesting. So, if you get a chance, go vote at the Milton Library. It is open, and I think it's six days a week. It could be on Saturday, too. So, this weekend and next weekend as well. So, it's open, and I've got my badge on, approved.
Okay. Steve, I'll turn it over to you in community development.
Kathy, do we have anything more for community development?
Thank you. Several things to report. In terms of the placemaking master plan for downtown Milton and Crab Apple, the final presentation has been scheduled for November the 30th, and we hope to, after Planning Commission reviews it, bring it forward. And we're estimating February of '17 for it to come before the council for consideration. The revisions to the tree ordinance, the tree preservation ordinance, tonight on the consent agenda, you approved the consultant who will be helping with this. We will have a kickoff of the stakeholder meeting on October 26th. In terms of the green space bond issue, town hall meetings have been scheduled.
Tomorrow night, 6:30.
That's right, tomorrow, 6:30, and then also on October the 24th, over at the Stone Creek Church. In terms of reflecting green space needs with the updated comprehensive plan, tonight you approved the final updated version, so we thank you for that. There are a number of text amendments that are going to go to, scheduled to go to the Planning Commission. All these are scheduled for next week. I'm not sure how many they will actually finish reviewing, but for those that are reported out, you will then see these on, in your third meeting in November. And these are as follows. We've got a text amendment to create retaining wall standards. We've got one to create steep slope standards. We also have an amendment to require fence permits for fences erected for agricultural purposes. We have a proposed amendment to the AG1 zoning district regarding paved and unpaved roads and associated with our new definitions for paved and unpaved roads. Next, we have the amendment to the Deerfield Form Base Code in terms of the subdivisions, both for the corridor itself, as well as for the insert five-acre area. And then, we have revisions to the plat process under chapter 50, and we're, even though we're not required, because it's not a zoning text amendment, it's a change to the subdivision rules, however, we are going to bring that to the Planning Commission, and then have it scheduled here for your November meeting. Also, the current rules that we have under the Rural Viewshed do require information meetings for subdivisions, for subdivisions that have been submitted, and we've got their LDPs under review. So, we've got two public information meetings also this week that are scheduled in this room. One is on Wednesday night, which is the 745 Ebenezer Road by Brightwater Homes to develop 21 single-family homes. That will be here at 7:00. And then, in addition, on the following night, on Thursday night, we've got 13475 Bethany Road by Chatham Holdings to develop 74 single-family homes. So, we will, we've got the developers will be present, and we will be discussing and informing the community about these two subdivisions.
Karen?
Once the information meeting takes place, will the information be available online for those who can't come to the meeting? Because I've had several people ask me, you know, what are these subdivisions going to look like?
Yes, that's a very good point, and we will certainly make sure that we do that.
Okay.
Bert?
Why aren't those meetings on the same night, like any other type of agenda things? You know, A and B, like every other meeting that we have.
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess we just thought, we, the way we schedule it, we put the signs up, we sent out the invitations, notifications, I should say, to the people who do live in the area. But we just schedule them separately, not for any particular reason.
You just want to look at that definitely?
Well, I just think for people that may have interest citywide in the same thing, I hate for them to have to come two nights in a row.
Yeah.
When every other meeting we have, whether it's a CZIM, the zoning meeting in here, Planning Commission meeting, everything else is stacked on the same day.
I think it's a fair, fair, analysis. The only other thing, though, once we, once we approve the text, if you approve the text amendments, this actually, this is going to go way, too, because this is going to be going before Planning Commission.
Right.
Bill?
Kathy, on RZ 1608, definitions regarding paved and unpaved roads, this came up quite a while ago, and I had asked, we know how to design paved roads. We have designs for paved roads. Are we going to come up with a design for unpaved roads?
We are. We don't have, we don't have one as yet, but part of the chapter 48 policies was that we would develop one in Public Works.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Also, just to add, you know, tomorrow night's town hall meeting, we'll discuss T-Sloths, too, so. All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll hold it there.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.